Anything been properly noticed?
Yes.
Moving on to recognitions, anyone from the board anything share with us tonight?
I wanted to mention that I, a couple of weeks ago, I worked with Mr. Brogley and Mr. Julius at the middle school and we organized a group of parents that would come in during recess times and basically be out on the playground during predominantly fifth and sixth grade recesses, but we have had some parents who have come in during seventh grade as well. And we've got about three or four families that are actively participating almost every day. So if people in the community want to be a part of that as well, there's a link on the social media posts and also, I believe, on the website where people can go and you have to fill out the proper forms, of course, but we'd love to have you and the kids are really enjoying it.
Anyone else from the board, anything this evening? Anyone from the audience that we may or may not hear from later?
Just us?
That'd be you guys.
I had a couple of recognitions today. I wanted to start with the music program, not just for the high school, but for across the district. They were recognized for the seventh time by the N A M M Foundation for one of the best communities for music education and just a really great honor and shows a great commitment by our music staff and students. Kind of along with that, recognize the students and staff that competed in the solo on Zombo contest this past weekend. They did an amazing job. Lots of recognitions there. In addition to that, there was also the state forensics. I'd like to recognize the students and staff that participated in that and did a wonderful job. And lastly, we had the results from the S W C math competition. Platteville brought home 18 medals, the most of any school in the conference, and would like to congratulate the students and staff that participated in the math competition. So, thank you.
I just want to take a quick minute and give a shout out to Marcy Russell and our sixth graders. They had the sixth grade play last week, Young Frankenstein. What was hilarious is they had the performance for the students, fifth and sixth grade students, in the morning. Some of them stayed in character all day, as then we had the parent performance that night on a Friday night at 5:00, and it was fantastic. Three weeks is all it took for them to learn their lines. They did a great job. And again, it just reinforced the idea that it's fun to have opportunities, again, for our kids. We're starting to get out there on field trips. I know our PTO has already pledged $1,000 per grade level to provide those opportunities. And I think that's a fantastic commitment on their part, and I know our kids are excited to get off campus and start those experiences. So, thanks.
And at Neil Wilkins, I'm already deciding who should be onstage when they get to sixth grade and fifth grade. There's several of them that, you know, it's just neat to see that they're gonna, they have those little personalities. At Neil Wilkins, yesterday we had a big day because we had kindergarten program last night, so they all walked up. We have 124 kids, so that's a pretty big class for Platteville. And they all went, walked up to the high school and performed in the morning to practice on the risers on the stage. And then in the afternoon, we had the kindergarten teachers invited parents in and guests, I should say. It was called Hanging with Hellman, and all the kids could bring up to two guests to their classrooms. They came in and they played outside and had cookies and punch. And then at night, we had the program at the high school. So I think Mackenzie Davidson deserves a shout out because she has all those kids up there and through music class, having practicing, and everybody did great at her, so.
I would like to give a shout out to Dakota Lovell, who worked very hard with our kids this year before going on his military. He even did an excellent job connecting with our students and building relationships. He, we look forward to a safe return next year. He developed positive relationships as well with our staff, and we will miss his smiling face every single day, but we look forward to the day that he comes back to us.
On behalf of the student staff and the community, I would like to thank Irfan and Ryan.
And Brian for their dedication for the past three years and then for the past 18 years. So, thank you so much on behalf of the school district, and we wish you well. And a personal thank you to Brian, who is one of the world's finest listeners. One of his ears is sore. I think that's good to me, but I'm very grateful that he offered...
I switch ears, so.
Can I say something?
Yep, recognition time.
And I do want to thank you each and every school board member here. I enjoyed my work here, and I find, you know, the people here have at their heart the students' interest. And then I think for me, that was really something which I value. Regardless whatever our opinions were, ultimately, we at the school board were always together, and we looked same, unified to the community. To me, that's very important, that regardless whatever discussions happen, when we go to community, we are seen as one rather than divided. And for me, that was also very important. So I want to appreciate that, every single one of you here. And then, of course, principals and then the extended staff, which had to bear my questions and, you know, all those things. But I hope you learned from all that, that I'm always trying to learn myself. And that's why those questions are there, because they always help me to learn and then help make my decisions better. So, thank you very much.
It's been an interesting 18 years. Three superintendents, No Child Left Behind, Act 10, COVID, various discussions regarding head coaching positions. Yeah, I was looking for a common theme on how I got here from 18 years ago. And December seems to be the common theme month. In 2001 and 2003, I was asked by Gabe Lefault, of all people, to run for the board. 2001, I threw my hat in. 2002, I did not get on the board. 2003, I was president of the J C's for the first time, started a new job, and was pregnant with our soon-to-be graduating youngest son, Desmond. We decided that was enough for that year. Ran into Gabe Lefault at the same event in December. Here I am 18 years later on the board. December of 2010, at that time, Lynn Schlegler was getting off the board, and I remember the Christmas social at Dean Eisenstein's house, going around asking board members or whatever, who's gonna be president? Who's gonna be president? Dean goes, maybe the person asking the questions is the man for the job. And so here I am, you know, 10-plus years later. So, thank you to the board, teachers, administration, staff, voters for wonderful 18 years. Thank you.
I'll follow up, Brian. Excuse me. Thank you to everybody. I am short and sweet. I hope I was able to help the community and help our school district out, given the resources that we need for the staff and for our students. Thank you.
Ryan, you are not short and sweet. You are big and sweet.
Wow. How red is my face?
It's just hot in here.
Furnace.
Moving on to opportunity for public input, I believe we have Elizabeth Gates.
I'm short and sweet, so I know you have a long agenda. I'm just here to speak on behalf of Music Boosters in support of the purchase of the marching band uniforms. And I want to say thank you to all of you for serving on the school board, first of all, and I appreciate you taking a close look at being fiscally responsible about making such a big decision, because I know it is tens of thousands of dollars. So the first thing I want to say, I've been the treasurer for the Music Boosters for the past four years, and all of the music teachers unanimously are really fiscally conservative. They don't ask for things unless they really are necessary. And I probably know more than any parent that's involved with band, both of my kids have been involved with band, how much we need the new marching band uniforms. We simply don't have enough marching band uniforms to fit all of the kids. I don't know if Mr. Cooley has talked about that at all, but the way that the marching band uniforms are purchased, they're purchased in sets. And right now, we don't have enough marching band uniforms for the kids that are taller or larger, and we can't simply purchase like one or two tall uniforms or uniforms for the larger kids. So when my husband and I have been fitting the kids with uniforms, you're in this really, really uncomfortable position of you kind of have to single out all the kids that you know are tall or heavy and fit them first with uniforms to make sure that you have enough to fit them. And we don't. And so you're literally fitting them, like trying to get them to say, like, I can't get the zipper up, you know, can you buckle in a little bit? You're gonna be able to wear this uniform for an hour? Is it comfortable? I mean, it's really, really, really terrible. And so, you know, for that reason alone, we need to have uniforms that fit all of the kids, because I do think some of kids probably are shying away from participating in band because we don't have a uniform that fits them. You know, I just wanted to speak a little bit about the merits of the marching band in general. I think when you're, when your kids start an activity when they're young, part of the reason they start it is because it's fun. Marching band is fun. But another reason when your kids start activities, as you think as a parent, it would be great if my kid, you know, played golf as an adult, if they could start playing this sport when they're young so they can do it when they're an adult. The same with marching band. My husband and I, when our kids were in, you know, music when they were four and started doing marching band, we thought, wouldn't it be great if they did this when they were in college? And both of my kids are going to do it in college. My daughter Anne is a sophomore at Eau Claire. She is in the marching band. My daughter Caroline will be in the marching band at Eau Claire next year. But there's no way that they could be in the marching band at this level if they didn't march in high school, because you have to try out at these big schools like Claire and Madison and Minnesota. And there's no way that our kids could do that unless they had the experience of doing this, like what Mr. Cooley is doing. And I do want to commend him. I think those of you that saw the presentation earlier, he's going so far above and beyond what is really required of him in this job, because you can see how much extra effort that it involves. And he's an amazing asset to the campus and the school district as a whole. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Moving on to information items, I believe that will have to be rescheduled. Eric cannot make it this evening? Moving on to items on the consent agenda.
5A for the adoption of the consent agenda. 5B are the minutes of previous meetings, March 23, regular school board meeting. 5C is the resignation of Ed Wigman, the high school, excuse me, technology education teacher. Letter D is a hire for, a new hire for special education assistant. This position was vacated at our last meeting, and this is replacing that. Letter E is the resignation of eighth grade boys basketball coach Dakota Lovell, who was mentioned in our public, or in our recognitions. Letter F, the district has received donations totaling $14,407.09 in the months from January to March, and those are listed on this document that we're looking at here. Thank you to all of those generous supporters of our students. Letter G, a financial report and bills for the month of March, in which we had total receipts of $3,958,824.85. Disbursements, $1,825,267.26. And all of the line item, all of the line item entries to follow. And the final item in the consent agenda would be the first readings of 600s. These have been forwarded through the Policy and Community Outreach Committee for the board's first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Jen. To approve the items on the consent agenda as presented. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Need a motion, a second, for the action item agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Matt, second by Lisa, to approve the action item agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
If I may, I would like to table, I did this wrong last time. I'll jump on it earlier next time. 7C and 7D, those contractor agreements. We have decided they're our partners, they're working with us, but the contract is a process in which legal teams on both sides have to come to agreements through various addendums. I'm confident at our next meeting, these will be ready to go. So I would like to table 7C and 7D. All those in favor, say aye.
Motion carries canvassed election results.
So we had our election, and it was canvassed on April the 7th, and the next three board members of the Platteville School District, we have Benjamin Grossman, we have Betsy Ralph Tolavison and Jessica Brogley. They will be sworn into office after this meeting, and their terms will begin the fourth Monday in April, so that's the 25th.
Move to approve the 2022 canvass election results as presented.
Motion by Josh, I'll give one to Ryan, second by Ryan to accept the canvass election results as presented. Questions or comments on that? Welcome to the board and...
You can say it after 18 years, right?
Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Band uniforms purchase.
So this is, the recommended action is a little unique, and it was placed into the agenda. It was altered this morning. So what I'm asking is, we have a second bid that isn't completed yet, but it's really close. And I would like the ability to, when we have that second bid, to work with high school administration, work with high school band instructor, and do a thorough comparison of the two, and then have a limit from the board as far as spend up to an amount on whatever one of those vendors that we decide on, as opposed to waiting for the next board meeting to get that process, to get it going. The reason there's a different amount in what I'm suggesting than what is in that proposal. And what I did was, I looked at, our Music Boosters have pledged that they would take care of those rain jackets, so that dollar amount was subtracted. And then I also just kind of did a rough comparison of other uniforms, looking at how long they last and just extrapolate it up. And I believe with that dollar amount that we can get the needed uniforms.
So moved. Motion by Irfan.
Second.
Second by Lisa. To, after securing a second competitive bid, the superintendent will determine the vendor purchase of band uniforms not to exceed 64,000 as presented. Questions or comments on that? Seeing or hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries. Items C and D will be for the next go-around. Moving on to item E, CISA III contract approval.
An annual event in which we secure services from CISA III into our district. And there are certain items that are standard, that we receive every year. Two items that we are adding for next year would be a new teacher service provided by CISA III. It's been around for a couple of years, having experienced some of it throughout. And then one of our teachers who started halfway through the year, she was experiencing it at her first stop, and she started to comment on how valuable it was. And this service, the key for it is it's such an objective, third person that can come into that new teacher's classroom, observe, meet with them, get right to the point, and then coach them throughout the year. So that's an added item. And then the other item would be the math help at the high school that we started with halfway through this year. We're going to continue that into next year. And the point person on that is Ellie Olson, and we have the intentions of sometime in May, have an Ellie present to the board as far as what the work that was done at that level. But otherwise, it is similar to previous years.
Just, just a quick question. So the hope is that we will be able to get the math teacher from Southwest Tech, because this year we were not able to do it.
That's a different, different topic. This is CISA III providing those services.
Move, we approve the 2022-2023 CISA III contract as presented.
Aye.
Motion by Josh, second by Kurt, to approve the 2022-23 CISA III contract. Any further questions or comments on that? Seeing or hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Athletic trainer contract.
Another annual event. We have a contract proposal next year for a partnership with Southwest Health and an athletic trainer. For reference, we included last year's contract as well.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Matt, to approve the Southwest Health, Southwest Health Center Athletic Trainer Contract as presented. Questions or comments on that? Seeing or hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Salary Matrix Non-Contracted Support.
So this, the documents that the board has, it represents the discussion that started in operations, two meetings ago. Last meeting, it was a full board discussion, and it was a 5% raise for each person, and that's what those documents there represent.
Move, we approve the 2022-23 Salary Matrix for Non-Contracted Support as presented.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Irfan, to approve the 2022-23 Salary Matrix for Non-Contracted Support Staff as presented. Further questions or comments on that? Seeing or hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Jenga.
Jenga. Motion carries.
That's awesome.
Moving on to Salary Matrix Contracted.
A similar process to the non-contracted staff. We had the discussion in operations, discussion as a full board, and it represents a 5% increase to each cell that our staff are in.
Motion to approve the 22-23 Salary Matrix Contracted as...
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Kurt, to approve the 2022-23 Salary Matrix Contracted as presented. Questions or comments on that? Seeing or hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries. Employee Handbook.
So another goes right in tow with the salaries, the wages, the insurance, and that is the Employee Handbook. The one piece of this handbook that we've already approved would be next year's calendar, and we did that in January. But this puts all of those elements together, and there's a chart that explains the changes from this year to next. There's the original from last year, and then the draft version of what these changes would look like in the handbook.
Move, we approve the 22-23 Employee Handbook as presented.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Jen, to approve the 2022-23 Employee Handbook as presented. Questions or comments on that? Seeing or hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Health Insurance Renewal.
This is an item in which we started talking about in early March, had two meetings with staff, worked through the board process. In short, Quartz is our current provider, and their renewal was too expensive. And we went out to bid back in probably December, January. Dean came in with an offer that allowed, when it's all said and done, a savings to the district next year of $530,000-plus. The big switch is, it is now a high deductible health plan with a health savings account. And in order to manage that, we do have our brokers having a meeting tomorrow night at 4:00, and then on next Tuesday night at 4:00, if staff have questions about that. Some of our staff have not experienced what a health savings account is. That'll be a change. But some of our staff have had that, and so there's advantages to the system. The key thing that I want to make sure the board understands, it's a high deductible health plan. So if you have a family plan with the district, your deductible is $3,000. Last, well, this year, our deductible for a family plan was $1,000. The district is putting $2,000 into that health savings account each and every year. It's not a one-time deposit, and you're on your own. It is each school year, that account will have $2,000 added to it. And with that, I felt it was a very competitive bid, and as a district, financially, we should take advantage of.
Move, we approve the 2022-23 Health Insurance Renewal Proposal as presented.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Lisa, to approve the 2022-23 Health Insurance Renewal. Questions or comments on that? Seeing or hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letters K and L are similar. K is going to work with our staff with individual contracts, and we have established the salary for next year. We have established our handbook. We have some of these major pieces that we've just resolved, but now it's time to get a letter out to our staff saying that your position, that you currently have, you have that going into next school year. Towards the end of May, once our evaluations are completed, once the stipends have been completed, we can then issue a contract with an accurate amount for what they will be earning next year. The purpose of these letters with board approval are to inform and ensure to our staff that their job exists next year, and in the spirit of retaining the quality staff, this, I believe, does that, as opposed to just waiting for a contract at the end of the school year.
Move, we approve the 2022-23 Staff with Individual Contracts under Wisconsin State Statute 118.22. Professional and exempt non-supervisory employees as presented.
Aye.
Motion by Josh, second by Kurt, to approve what Josh just stated. Further questions or comments on that? Seeing or hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Letter L.
Same concept, but this is for our staff that aren't under contract as per state statute.
Move, we approve the 2022-23 Non-Exempt Staff Without Individual Contracts under Wisconsin State Statute 118.22 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Jen, to approve what Josh again stated so nicely for us. Questions or comments on that? Seeing or hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Seventh grade math teacher hire.
We're recommending the approval of Lauren Graham as our seventh grade mathematics teacher in the middle school. Her paperwork is attached. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Irfan, second by Matt, to approve the hiring of Lauren Graham as seventh grade math teacher starting this fall. Questions or comments on her hiring? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. New hire, sixth grade teacher.
Recommending the approval of hiring Anna Nagreen as a sixth grade teacher in our middle school, and her documentation is attached as well.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Lisa, give it to Irfan. Second by Irfan, to approve the hiring of Anna Nagreen as sixth grade teacher starting this fall. Questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries, new hire, fifth grade teacher.
Recommending the approval of hiring Vicky Peterson as our fifth grade teacher next year here in the middle school, and the correct paperwork is attached.
So moved.
Second.
By Kurt, second by Lisa, to approve the hiring of Vicky Peterson as fifth grade teacher starting this coming fall. Questions or comments on her hiring?
Notice that the wage and salary is to be determined. Is there?
So she'll be at B2, but understand when she becomes fully licensed, then we have to recognize that license. So it's kind of confusing, but for example, with a previous one, Anna, she's a licensed public school educator in Wisconsin, but it expired. She's taught in North Carolina and also in Dubuque. So those are Iowa, those are existing licenses. Vicky has an emergency license. She has yet to have that initial teaching license. So right now, it is at this level. But once we have that official licensure, then we need to revisit it.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, hire kindergarten teacher.
I would recommend that the board approve hiring Ashley Knudsen as a kindergarten teacher at the Neil Wilkins Early Learning Center. Paperwork attached.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Matt, second by Ryan, to approve the hiring of Ashley Knudsen as kindergarten teacher starting this fall. Questions or comments on her hiring? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries, hire kindergarten teacher.
Recommend a motion to approve the hiring of Kylie Becker as the other kindergarten teacher position at Neil Wilkins. Paperwork attached.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Lisa, to approve the hire, approve the hiring of Kylie Becker kindergarten teacher starting this fall. Questions or comments on her hiring? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Kurt, to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, one and all.